We're going to open the meeting. This is the regular meeting of the Town of East Bridgewater Planning Board. It's Monday evening, May 3rd, 2021. We're going to call it 7:13 PM is our official start time. Currently present for the board, regular members Roy Gardner, Christine Handley. New members Rob Ken, Sherri Bates, and recently re-elected member John Lala. Also present, members Ed O'Leary and associate member Kevin Riley. So we have six of our regular members present. Lindy Snow, traditionally for the extended period of time, has been joining us electronically. He's currently not online yet. I will note for the record if he does come online while the meeting is ongoing. We have six regular members present. I'm going to suggest that we reorganize for the next year. So we'll start off, the normal way we do this is we start off with nominating regular members for the position of clerk.
Nominate Christine Handley, service clerk.
We have a second, so that's a motion Riley, second Lala, to nominate Christine Handley for clerk. Do we have any other nominations? Alright, so I'll call that the nominations at this point are closed. So to act on the nomination for Christine Handley for clerk, all members present in voting in favor of electing Christine Handley clerk for the next year until next annual election, say aye.
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 Opposed? We'll show that as
You can do it.
We'll show that as all members voting, which I believe is six regular members and our associate member Kevin Riley. Next item is we need to elect a vice chairman. So at this point, I'll open nominations for vice chairman.
Move to appoint Ed O'Leary as vice chairman for the next year.
Thanks.
You're welcome.
I'll get you for that.
Do we have a second? So we have a second, we have a motion Riley and a second Lala to elect Ed O'Leary as our vice chairman for the next year before, up until town election. Do we have any other further nominations? So at this point, I'll declare the nominations closed. And all those in favor of electing Ed O'Leary as the vice chairman for will be to nominate chairman for the next year.
Appoint Roy Gardner as chairman.
Second.
So again, that's a nomination Riley, second Lala, to appoint Roy Gardner, myself, chairman for the coming year. Further discussion? Any other nominations? Are the clan nominations closed at this time? All those in favor of electing Mr. Gardner chairman for the next year, say aye.
Aye.
I guess we'll call that six in favor of regular members voting, as well as Kevin Riley, our associate member. I thank you all for that. And thank you, Ed and Christine, for another year in your roles. Alright, so we have minutes from April 5th, 2021, to approve.
To approve the minutes of April 5th, 2021, as presented.
Do you have a second to that?
Second.
Okay, so we have a motion Riley, second Handley. Any further discussion on the motion to approve the minutes of April 5th, 2021? All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
We'll show that as all seven members present, voting in favor, seven to nothing in favor. We have no bills at this point in time, so we move on to, we're beyond 7:05 PM. So next item is the Speedway Park LLC. Technically, this is a continuation of a hearing that was opened last month, but we continue the hearing without any testimony. So at this point in time, we'll hear from Speedway Park LLC with a presentation on their special permit for 798 North Bedford Street.
Craig Driscoll and Patrick Carrera here from PMP Associates tonight, representing Speedway Park for 798 North Bedford Street. As previously discussed, we withdrew the previous application for the project and resubmitted as a modification to the existing special permit. This building right here was already approved by a previous owner and applicant, and then the current applicant would like to build these two buildings, or total three buildings on the site, over 10,000 square feet of area, which requires a special permit. Providing all parking grounds, the
So can we clarify what the intended use of those three buildings will be?
Any use that's allowed in the industrial zone. They want to leave it open to any tenants that would be willing to rent from any of these buildings. So we provided parking on the site, as well as an agreement with the budding property, provide actually 105 square spaces. All these existing spaces will also be accessed through our property and available to the new buildings.
So that budding property is actually property that's under PNS agreement for another buyer at this point in time? Am I correct?
I'm not aware of that. Mike, do you know if that's true?
It is, yes.
So an agreement will be made that'll run with the land, that you can use that parking? An agreement will be made that runs with the land, so that parking to be provided on that
So you'll have some kind of an easement agreement with whoever the budding landowner is at such time as they take the property to indicate that you'll have a right to share parking in that site?
Yes.
Okay, so the key thing to remember at this point in time is that it's up to the building inspector under the zoning bylaw to make the final call if he makes the determination that where that parking is located is not suitable for that building. That's his call, not this board's call. It's also important to know that I don't think as a board we have any problem with, let's say, approving a shell building without the clear use defined at this point in time, but just a warning that if one of those uses requires significant change to the building for whatever reasons, i.e. fire, safety, any of those other kinds of things, including adequate parking within a certain distance of the building, all of those calls belong to the building inspector. So our purpose here tonight is basically to see how the building's laid out, what percent use of the property is made, and how the parking is delineated, and whether or not the stormwater management that's associated with that site is considered adequate under our rules and regulations. And just for the record, we officially hired, at the end of last week, a consulting engineering firm for the town. We had a meeting with them today. We will be forwarding all of the current documents of things pending before us right now, that this is one of those. They will be reviewing this from an engineering standpoint. How that's going to work out from a contractual and financial standpoint, we're still working on, so we'll have to update you on that. So given all those things, and I apologize for the interruption, because this is a little bit complicated at this point, but feel free to continue at this point, if you would, please.
So the project is also before conservation right now as well, and they're reviewing the drainage. We have proposed underground systems here for the roofs and tying into the existing detention basin on the site. We reason that, so that's the drainage. Any uses that require a additional wastewater holding tank, those will be provided according with building inspector on that, plumbing inspector. Dumpster areas jointed in these areas for the site. Planscaping plan.
Just a quick question. In terms of, in the context of what was originally developed at that site, the amount of impervious area that you're going to have in the new site as it's developed is, based on my look at that site in the previous development from some 20, I believe it's the 2014 satellite photos of that site, it's roughly going to be the same. The impervious area is just going to be replaced by the new buildings and from the old buildings that were basically there that are no longer there.
Yeah, that's correct, Roy. Yeah. The entire site was basing through here for yield funding use, so there's really going to be no exchange at all.
Okay.
It's the existing site right now. X1 site where the parking will be. Does that motion know where's the control plan? Everything's being taken out.
So I assume from what I've just seen there that the amount of parking that's on the other site is clearly delineated in there from the way those plans are drawn right now, right?
Yeah, those are existing parking spaces from the
Right, but those parking spaces are physically on the F1 site right now.
Correct.
Or what we refer to for now as the F1 site.
Yep. And there's a fence around it as well, hopefully, perimeter, so
Yeah, the F1 track is on the inside of that fence, if I remember correctly from looking at it a few weeks back.
And we'll make a few modifications right in here for access in and out of the
Okay.
That portion of the site. With stop bars and lines, this is all paved through here, but we're going to have marker lines to make sure the traffic knows where to go, so they can have safe access. We're closing one way around the back of the building, assuming that we'll have trucks that deliveries will come back here as well.
Alright, is there anyone on the board which would like to ask questions to the applicant at this time?
Mr. Chair, except when, what's the plant for water supply?
There's existing water.
You're going to use the existing service for the whole facility?
Yep.
It may need to get moved over to Highland as the back piece progresses. That's a shared drive, so the back piece has ownership in it as well, so it may need to loop between 18 and Highland, but I haven't done any hydrant testing yet to see what the pressures are, but we will, because we need it for the sprinklers.
Thank you.
Alright, so somewhat related to that, a couple of additional questions since it's not 100% clear yet what the occupants of those buildings would be. What happens with that in terms of required water usage and water health-related issues, primarily septic systems and things like that? Those are all going to be almost 100% defined by what the tenants and the buildings are going to be, I assume.
Yeah, no, you're correct. We've got an existing septic system on the site, obviously it has been used in quite some time. We'll be tying into that. We have a design flow for that from the original Funway development. I don't remember what it is off the top of my head, Roy, it was something in the era about 1,700 gallons a day. So for the time being, that will back the uses into that as they come in, you know, based on, you know, whether it's, you know, office space, contractor bay, retail, whatever it tends to be that's allowed in the district.
Okay.
So the special permit is for use, right? Permit is for, is that why they need the special permit? Do you need to
Well, they need to
For a different reason? Because I know that we went back and forth between the different uses between my front and back building.
So the issue we had previously is the first special permit, which was granted for the front building, was granted for a specific use. And the second, or the, let's call it the second filing for a special permit was, wanted to maintain that building special permit, but they wanted to change the use as part as the plans that we had before us. So we were advised by town council that we can't do it that way. We have to modify the existing special permit to include all of the new buildings and the modification for the use of the front building. So the front building is roughly the same physical location and roughly the same square foot area of the original permit.
Yeah, exactly.
Yeah, the foundation's actually in.
Yeah, but its use is now more open. And from the presentation that we've been given, it basically says that the use of all three buildings is undefined. The special permit we're going to grant is going to grant effectively for all of the uses allowed within that district, and we're going to have to constrain it with some conditions that say that all of those uses before the billing permit is granted for each of the, however many units it ends up being, however the buildings get divided up, will be the building inspector's call prior to the billing permit being issued to make sure that all of those other requirements are met, which means adequate parking, adequate fire protection if sprinklers required, adequate septic for water health requirements, the kind of things that the building inspector would have on his plate in terms of issuance of building permits. Our primary issue in the special permit piece in this case, since the council I looked at before the meeting tonight for parking appeared to cover virtually any of the uses within the district, if we include the off-site parking. We'll have to see, not exactly sure how that's going to work right now, since the current owner has that under agreement with a potential buyer. So obviously you can't have a hard and fast easement document to be able to record it to registry for that parking. I don't think we need that at this point, until you actually get to the point where you've got tenants, potential tenants assigned and are looking for building permits. At that point
You can't from the current, not only interrupt, but you can't from the current owner. Right, so I mean, F1 could grant that now, if that's the
We'd have to check with town council, because I don't know how their PNS for the new buyer is worded. They may not be able to issue it at this point. I'm sorry, there's a hand in the back?
Evening, everyone. My name's John O'Leary. I'm representative from Rhino Capital, who is the company that has that site with RJ Valentine under agreement. We're still early in our process, but I just wanted to voice our support for Mr. Payton's development. We are, like I said, in full support for that. The easement discussion has not been brought up to us, but we are, like I said, willing to work and, you know, willing to be good neighbors. So I guess I just wanted to introduce myself and
So the expectation we can look at is that whenever the time comes, either you go ahead with the purchase and sale agreement and execute it, that you'd be willing to come up with a, some form of easement document, we'll leave it generally described as some form of easement document at this point.
Absolutely, something mutually beneficial could certainly work.
Who would the board prefer the easement be through? The current owner or the
I don't believe we
Doesn't matter. I mean, just as long as it's there in some fashion.
Okay.
As long as it runs with the land.
Yeah.
Just come, it comes with the land.
I'm not 100% sure we can accept it from the current owner right now, given an active purchase and sale agreement. That constrains the existing real estate to some extent, based on my understanding of our discussions we've had earlier with, I'm not sure who I spoke to, but I spoke to someone at Rhino Capital.
That was myself and my colleague.
Town council has advised us to be careful with, when there's a clear purchase and sale agreement that's got clear language in it that we haven't seen yet, as to whether or not existing owner, after having signed that purchase and sale agreement. Because effectively, if the terms in that purchase and sale agreement are met, he has no right to do anything. You have all the rights at this point.
Yes, that's correct. And as I said, we're, you know, I haven't seen this plan set, so I can't speak to it definitively, but I
For now, we'll take that you're saying you work with the
It is our intention to be a good neighbor to Mr. Payton.
Okay.
So you're a purchaser, correct?
Yes, that's correct. We have the property under agreement.
My way of understanding, as long as Mr. F1 owns the property, he can do what he wants with the property and has every legal right to grant an easement. Not that it matters, again, I think that the question is, as long as it's there at some point.
Well, town council has advised in a telephone call I had with him that depending on the language in the actual purchase and sale, he may not have any, provided the purchase and sale goes through and is executed. Because effectively, as I understand it, in most business purchase and sales, you have an absolute right to the property unless you reneg on some component within that purchase and sale agreement.
That's my understanding as well. I can't, again, unfortunately, I can't speak to the
Yeah, I don't want to get into the legalities of it, but the key thing is you're willing to work with the current applicant for the special permit to cover that issue.
Absolutely.
Okay, okay, thank you.
Because something of this application, probably as a condition, we need at some point in time for them to be able to proceed with building permit and constructing the site, that we would need evidence of the easement for the parking, correct?
So the way the condition would be worded was that at such time as they've utilized all of the parking on their physical site, that the building inspector would have to have in his hands a recorded easement for the remaining parking that's on the other site. So they could theoretically occupy one and a half, two of those buildings before they trigger the need for that additional parking.
Then I think the language would need to be carefully written that way to have a phased development. I mean, there's not a lot of square footage and not a lot of, like, parking normally, which would be like something that you would have in place, you know, upon building permit, you would have an easement in place or something along those lines, that's acceptable.
Well, that's what we'd say, that, you know, the building permits can only be issued after the applicant has demonstrated as part of his building permit application that the required parking for that use is on the site, or they already have an easement in place and recorded for the remaining parking on the offsite.
Yeah, that's kind of what I was going to speak to Roy, as you said earlier. As each business comes in, they'll have to submit to the building inspector something that shows, this is my unit, these are my designated spaces to fit my use. At some point, you know, let's just say Rhino Capital, you know, changes their mind and we don't have access to those spaces, like Roy was saying, we'll get to a limit where we've used every space available on the site, and the building inspector wouldn't be able to grant, you know, the next building permit for the next unit. So, you know, as Roy was saying, at that point, we would have to prove to the building inspector that we have access to these spaces, we have these available for these additional units now. So it would in a sense take care of itself.
Do you mean unit, or do you mean building? Because I would say if you're building a building, you would need the parking available for that building, not just the unit that you're building out.
Well, yeah, the building can't be occupied, you know, again, you know, each of these buildings could have multiple units in them.
Right, so that just play into that a little bit more. So theoretically, we have potentially three tenants, or we could have 23 tenants, whatever, right?
Exactly.
In theory.
Right, we don't know at this point.
Completely undefined uses.
Right, I mean, he could have one person that takes an entire building with two employees. He just wants the storage space, in which case he only needs three parking spaces. We don't know that at this point. But that's a process that would take care of itself, as Roy was saying, through the building department and the building inspector.
Well, again, I kind of go back to the same focus that I had at the last time this was here, and that is that the bylaw says you need to demonstrate a need, okay, to get a special permit in this district. I can see certainly, a medical building, absolutely. Contractor bay, not so much. So I have that issue there that says that, you know, the building inspector is going to be deciding parking. Well, okay, that's fine. Personally, I think there should still be some form of control over the various, I don't think it should be a decision that's left entirely to the building commissioner, building inspector. I think that, you know, the board should have some say as far as this, you know, compliance with the intent provisions of Section 5K. You know, in terms of, if we're putting in contractor bays, as I say, I would necessarily favor that. If we're putting in office use, great, I think that's fine, or many other uses would be fine. But I think that the board shouldn't give up all control over that, because the bylaw says that, you know, this is something that's necessary to be demonstrated, and I don't see how it can be demonstrated when you don't have the full knowledge.
Okay, understood. Anyone else have questions on the board?
So the design of the parking would change if it was contractor based, or if it was retail, or if it was office. So the site plan changes with each use, depending on how you would have trucks backing in, or how you would have pedestrian access to the building. So I'm not sure how we can move forward with defining, with approving a special permit without understanding what the use is that's connected from the site to the building.
So obviously, there's an issue because of the density of that. If somebody came along and said that they wanted to open a retail store in that back building, we got a serious parking issue, because that doesn't traffic flow. It's pretty clear. You can't use that off-site parking, if you will, for a retail building if someone takes that whole back building.
But that, I can say, okay, there's potentially a need for that, that has a benefit to the town in terms of employment and so on.
It doesn't fit that plan, though.
It might not fit that plan, but that fits the intent of, you know, conditions of the bylaw.
Especially if the front building is already occupied with a bunch of individual offices. So it's going to be a difficult, well, we're going to have to debate that when we go through the permitting process and make a decision as to how we're going to word the language in the permit.
Can I ask another question? Do we have anything that's in the way of a rendering of the building that's in that set there?
They're not
Well, I got a rough one.
Yeah, they got the rough ones. They don't have the finalized ones.
Sort of a general idea.
Just not pretty.
So are we planning on actually constructing the buildings before we have tenants?
The back building I would do, the two front buildings, I think I have to wait and see what the market does. We don't, the intention isn't to do, we'd like to see if now with some, you know, a lot of jobs going out back, there could be a positive need for retail on those two front buildings. But I'm not going to sit here and say that's what's going in, but my gut tells me that if there's big, you know, there's a big job coming out back, there's going to be a need for that. So we have kind of gone away from the contractor base, because that wouldn't be the best use of my property. So, you know, I can't sit here and definitively say anything, but if things trend the way we all think that area is now trending, you know, I envision it like when we met with the town manager. I can envision more of a retail mixed use in those front two buildings, which ultimately is better for me. So that's why we canceled the first building where the foundation is. That building was ordered, we've canceled that building. Those buildings are not going to go up until we have a better idea of what's happening in that area. And again, I think we all think it's going to be positive, and again, it's better for me to have retail, commercial, mixed use than it is to have a contractor bay with a plumber in it, but I just, I can't, you know, back myself into a corner either and say that 10 years from now, there's nothing going on and I've got to use the space. The buildings wouldn't
Oh, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, I thought you were
The buildings wouldn't even be constructed as metal buildings, the two front ones, if there was a retail need, those
So there's a potential, since the special permit is good for two years, there's a potential you may not even build anything until you at least get some fill as to what kind of tenants you might get.
I can't see all three projects being done in two years. They won't be, unless somebody comes in and just, you know, says, I need the whole thing, but as of right now, it's not marketed that way. But ultimately, that would be in the best interest of me, in the best interest of the town.
Well, personally, I commend you for moving away from something to do with contractor bays, and, you know, I think that there are many other available uses there, and I think that are better for both you and the town, and, you know, that's I just, I have the problem, I think, as I share with Christine, the idea that it's a little bit nebulous, and I don't know how you kind of work around that, but hopefully we could find a way.
Okay, any other questions on Okay, any, any other questions on, from the board? Any, any questions from any other people in the room? Anything else you want to offer at this point, in terms of the proposal? As I said, we're going to be sending this out to our engineer maybe as early as tomorrow.
Just curious, who's the engineer? Who's the consulting engineer?
Environmental Partners.
Yeah, Environmental Partners is a consultant.
We can send it electronically if you want. I don't know what's the process yet, but you guys.
Yeah, so we're having a site plan review on Wednesday, in this, in this area right here with, with the departments. And Environmental Partners, who we just took on as a townwide engineering firm, will be, will be present for that as well. So we should be.
Part of what we're attempting to do as a town, not just a planning board, but as a, as a town in general, is we put together, and I'll call it an ad hoc committee, which basically has memberships of all of the departments that are interested in building in town. Conservation Board of Health, the Building Inspector's Office, the Highway Department, the Planning Board, the Zoning Board of Appeals, basically all of the departments within the town. The selectmen are represented. We're going to have a meeting once or twice a month. Typically, it's going to be Wednesdays, the way this has been going. So we're all going to sit in the same room and discuss what's coming, so everyone in all the various departments knows what's going on, when it's coming in. We're, we're attempting to, let's simply say, better communicate between the departments. Given the, what I consider the absurd state of mass general laws, where all of these departments are required by law to operate independently of each other, we need to do something better to try and better coordinate the things different departments are asking to be done. We've tried to do that, especially in the last decade or so with conservation, but we need to do it with everyone. We need the DPW to know what the water needs are going to be, what the demands are going to be. We need the building inspector to have a better idea of, of what the safety needs are. We need the Board of Health to know what's going on in terms of the buildings that are being built and what their needs are going to be, and so on and so forth. So we actually do have a meeting Wednesday to discuss several different plans, this being one of them. Environmental Partners is, is committed to participate in that meeting. I believe they're going to participate via Zoom, but they will be participating in that meeting. They will be the ones going forward that will be our reviewing engineer, and they will be the reviewing engineer for the town. We haven't actually signed the final contract yet, but the intent is they will be the reviewing engineer for all of the town departments. So there'll no longer be different, you know, engineering or experts involved that will be going through a single point of contact with Environmental Partners. Hopefully, very quickly, that turns to a plus in terms of all of the applicants before us. But we'll see, we'll see how that goes moving forward. Given that I'm not hearing any more questions, and I think we've covered all of the items that we need to cover in terms of the public hearing component, so, first of all, I'd like to note for the record that we've got seven members present at this public hearing. That's myself, Christine Hanley, Sherri Bates, John Lala, Edward O'Leary, Rob Ken, and Kevin Riley, our associate member. That gives us a seven-member voting capability when time comes to vote on the actual permit issuance. But at this time, I'll entertain a motion to close the public hearing. Speedway Park LLC, I'm sorry.
I just wanted to have one question.
Yes.
The parking on the south side of the driveway, can you remind me, is, that's on a different lot, right? Would we, how did that handle in the?
I think, I think the parking is on the Speedway, Speedway Park LLC lot, but I think the access is actually on the other lot.
Yeah, there's cross easements between these two properties for the access. I also share the septic system and the water, so.
That all probably exists and runs with the land?
Yeah.
Yeah, there's existing easements that run with the land that we had rented probably fifteen years ago, give or take, a year or two.
At least.
Maybe longer than that, yeah. It's hard to keep track these days, but.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay. So I think, I think there was a motion to close the public hearing from Member O'Reilly. Do we have a second to that motion?
A second.
We have a second, Lala. Any further discussion in the motion to close the public hearing at this time? All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? We'll show that as unanimous vote of all seven regular members, six regular members, and Kevin O'Reilly is our seventh member voting to close that public hearing. Seven in favor, none opposed, and we'll call the time seven forty-eight PM.
Move to continue the Speedway Park LLC application till seven oh five PM on the seventeenth or the seventh, whichever.
Yeah, so let's put the Speedway Park application for discussion and potential vote on the special permit for our next meeting at seven oh five PM.
Are we having a meeting on the seventeenth? There'll be nobody there to?
For now, let's say yes. And, and we'll notify everyone if we don't. Since it won't be a public hearing meeting, we only need to notify the applicant if we decide that that because of the vacation schedule, we're not going to meet. I don't see any reason we can't meet, but we'll discuss that as we go.
Move to continue the Speedway application until five seventeen at seven oh five.
Second.
So that's a motion, Riley. Second, O'Leary, was that, was that you read? Second, O'Leary, to continue the, the discussion on the Speedway Park LLC application to May seventeenth at seven oh five PM.
Okay, well, we closed the public hearing, correct?
Yes.
Let's take the floor, all in the same favor.
That simply means we're not going to discuss it further tonight, because we need to, we need to have some feedback from our engineer. Hopefully, very shortly down the road, we'll have things better ordered, as, as I think, I know Mike knows this. The planning board has almost totally changed in the last two years. I don't control that, obviously. Apologize for the difficulties that's created to applicants to some extent. Our engineer has also changed with little notice, so that's another problem. But hopefully, moving forward, we've got all of that covered now, and things will be a little more expeditious, so, thank you all.
What the motion is?
I'm sorry, on the motion to continue Speedway Park LLC discussions to five seventeen, seven oh five PM. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? We'll show that as the same seven in favor, none opposed, that's unanimous vote of the seven members that are going to be voting on that special permit. Thank you.
Thank you.
I have the registration lease form that we're going to be casting around, if you can sign on your name, please. There's two files.
Are the new officers correct on it now? Okay, very good, thank you.
All right, so now we're going to do the south branch.
The MJL Construction Southwood Drive is the next item on the agenda.
I've got to get them.
Okay.
South branch?
All right, here we go. Craig Driscoll and Patrick Crer here tonight, representing MJL Construction for the Phase Five of Tower Heights.
Can you hang on just a minute till we make sure that residents that are out there that want to participate in that, or, or, or where? I'm not sure if there is any out there, but there's a lot of people out there right now.
I guess it's just the engineer.
All right.
Gee, it's too bad.
Unless, unless he's downstairs, I need to go downstairs.
Oh, who?
Mr.?
Oh, Mike?
Lopez.
I don't know. I haven't seen him.
I should go check, just to be honest, so.
They're signing up to your name, and those are the records at the registration at the land court. There are issues. That's the judge.
We need to read the notice.
There you go, bud.
We need to read the notice, we need to read the notice.
Yeah, when we actually open the hearing, I just want to make sure that everyone's in the room, that we need to have.
Okay, we need to go.
He's on your second term, I don't know.
We set to go?
Fine, yeah, all systems go.
All right, so what we're going to do is, is we're going to open the public hearing for the subdivision, and we didn't open this one last week, last meeting, did we?
Yes.
We did, and we already read the public hearing, I think, right? So technically speaking, this is a continuation of that. So this is the second, this is the second public hearing that we technically opened last meeting. The reason, the reason we did that that way, I think, is self-evident. There's three new members sitting in the board that weren't going to be here in that previous hearing. So what we're going to do is, is, we're not going to have to read that, thankfully. Christine, so what we're going to do is, I'm going to simply declare that the public hearing is open. Note for the record that we took no testimony when we actually opened the public hearing on the original time and date. And, and we're going to declare that meeting, this meeting, this public hearing opened at seven fifty-three PM. And you're free to go ahead and.
The applicant, Mike Lopez, of MJL Construction proposes to construct a new five-lot residential subdivision off of Captain's Way here in East Bridgewater, going through this parcel here to his backland in this area. It's a zoned residential R1, it was rezoned.
Well, it was rezoned, what, a couple of years ago, Roy?
Two years ago, yes, two years ago.
Residential property. And he wants to phase the construction, so he's going to build these first five lots now. This temporary cul-de-sac will get extended down into this area in the future. We've designed the drainage and everything else to take into account the extension of the road up to a high point right around here. And that will all go back into the detention basin that's designed right in here.
So the stormwater management calculations take into account the fact that there's a planned add of additional roadway in the future?
Exactly, yep. Additional impervious pavements, houses, driveways, all that stuff.
So ju- just as a, as a standard, when we know roadway's going to get extended, what we're going to ask for physical construction is we're going to probably want to see a hammerhead turnaround?
Yep, that's what we're showing right here. And this is, you know, there's assumptions of an extended roadway. All this area in here is going to this basin right, right there.
So what, what we would do is, on that, on the, the temporary cul-de-sacs that's shown, is we'd want to see the wings of that cul-de-sac shown as easements. But we do want to, we do want the cul-de-sac to be there in case, I'm sure it will happen, but if the, if the marketplace changes and it's determined that's going to be a cul-de-sac for a long time, we'll probably want to, want to get that constructed. Otherwise, we'll just, we'll just make the wings go away in an easement, it'll be continued as a, as a straight roadway through. So, so the important thing here is, we're not going to be counting that the radius of that cul-de-sac or the diameter sides of that cul-de-sac is frontage for the next houses.
Correct, correct.
We're going to continue that road straight through to be the frontage for the future homes there, so, okay.
And as far as the construction of that, I've had some emails with Craig Windsor. He had some concerns about that, and I talked to Mike Lopez. Mike's going to plan on paving the hammerhead and then finishing the radius of what would be a cul-de-sac with gravel and reclaimed asphalt for a temporary turnaround for fire vehicles.
Do you have that information?
Yep, yep. Yeah, we do have information from the, from the safety, the safety guy who's Craig at the, at the Fire Department, the deputy chief, Windsor. So the, the way we, we plan on doing this from now on in the future is we'll defer to his opinion as to what we need to do for those.
Okay.
Makes sense, he needs it more than anybody.
All right, so the way we've designed the drainage for this is to take into account all the existing area that goes to the wetland in this direction, and there's another section that goes off to that wetland in that direction, the existing condition. And then, we're only treating in the basin what we need to treat, which is going to be the roadway and the house lots. And then we have cross culverts coming through here that are going to convey the existing area that flows across the site currently. So it's a way to keep the detention basin just treating what it needs to treat, which is the impervious areas, so.
Has this been filed with conservation yet?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah, we're kind of waiting to see what, what planning board is going to do as far as our review engineer. So hopefully, Environmental Partners.
So I think, I think we answered that, but we'll say again that Environmental Partners is going to be the, the team that's reviewing this. The plan will be to send that to them, and I'll communicate, I'll communicate with you guys at PMP and set up an electronic communication link with our contact at Environmental Partners, so, so you can send them a true distilled PDF format of that document, so they can, they can get the kind of accuracy they need, along with, along with the drainage calculations and so on and so forth.
Yeah, that'll be good, because I believe, from talking to Kim, I think they've already sent the plan to Alan and Major for review of conservation.
I think probably they did, because the two filings that came in a few weeks ago, this went in a second subdivision that, that is an ongoing filing with us. They've sent those to Alan and Major to do the stormwater management piece. So we are going to send this to Environmental Partners in any case. And fairness to applicants, we'll make sure you don't get double billed for anything that gets done. We're in a kind of a learning curve, if you will, with our new engineers, so at some point in time, hopefully not too far down the road, they'll be the sole engineering source for the, for the, for all the various boards, but that's still an ongoing work in progress. Hopefully, the, the work gets done quickly, but it is still a work in progress, so.
Yeah.
We'll coordinate with them, because I'm not sure if they sent it out to Alan Major yet.
Yeah, we'll, we'll find out from Kim, because obviously, you know, for us, the real headache would be getting two separate sets of review comments on the same stormwater system.
We'll make sure that doesn't happen, so. We'll communicate better than we've done in the past, maybe, but we'll make sure that doesn't happen.
Good, appreciate that. So, yeah, that's pretty much the overview of the project. Does there's any, any questions, or anything I missed?
No, like I said, it's pretty simple right now. This will be, you know, we'll call Phase Five A, the first five lots into the subdivision. And, you know, obviously, the intent, hopefully the market stays strong. The intent will be to continue it, as we showed you on the preliminary plan, to do the rest of the build-out for that property.
Okay, so is my, my preliminary, I look at this, and, and I'm not a civil engineer, but it, it looks like you've done pretty much what, what we've asked, and, and are going to continue to ask, and that is that, that, that all of the roadway drainage is, is manhole catch basin piping to off-road stuff that then lets become, that at that point becomes more environmentally sensitive than, than maybe some of the older stuff we used to do, but and for at least the near term and probably the longer term, we will still be requiring in everything that we do, all the, all the in-street stuff will be manholes, catch basins, in-street drainage.
Yep.
And flow out through pipes underground, and then we'll, we'll try and get as creative as we can with the environmentally sensitive things off the roadway.
Yeah.
To make sure that they will work in the wintertime. We've already got one problem in town where we did a little bit of an experiment, it didn't work.
Mm-hmm, yeah.
We've seen a couple in two other towns where they clearly don't work, where a whole subdivision was done with, with infiltration stuff on the sides of the roads and all that, and the road was a swamp all winter long, as long as there was, was snowbanks there.
No, I mean, clearly with the, you know, you, I mean, obviously, Roy, you know the area.
Yep.
You know, with the soils and the groundwater up there, it's, it's very hard to do that kind of creative drainage systems without, you know, constant maintenance.
Even, even in a good soil area, it's difficult to do that when you take into account those three or four months, or even five months in, in the wintertime where you've got snowbanks and freezing and things like that, so.
Absolutely.
Okay.
So that's why we looked at this like you say, the, the road and the impervious areas, conventional drainage, keep some catch basins, manholes, and that's why we went with the addition of these cross culverts to limit what was actually getting into the in-street system.
Okay, so at this point, I'll go around the board. Any members of the board have any questions that they, they wish to ask of? This is a subdivision, so we're going to be limited in terms of the vote we take to the six members that are sitting here at this, regular members that are sitting here at this point in time. But feel free, anybody has a question? Okay, do you guys have anything else you want to offer at this point in time?
I just wanted to mention that we're asking for two waivers. One of them is for the street jogs from North Ridge over to the proposed road here. From one hundred twenty-five feet to eighty-five feet, from center line to center line.
Okay.
And then another waiver for one of these cross culverts, I believe it's this one, to do less than thirty inches of cover.
Okay.
But this in-street drainage all needs that requirement.
So we'll have our engineer look at that, or Alan and Major, if that's already gone to them. And we'll also have DPW look at that to make sure that they're satisfied with whatever type of pipe there, the, the cover, the shorter cover is, is acceptable, given the type of pipe that's going to be used, so. Hey, anything else, anyone? So I think at this point in time, we, we could entertain a. So I think at this point in time, we, we could entertain a motion to close the public hearing for South Ridge Drive Tower Hill. So we've got a motion, O'Larry, Second Lawler, I believe, to close the public hearing. Any further discussion in the motion to close? Okay, all those in favor of the motion to close, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? So that is six in favor, none opposed, with the
No vote.
Associate member Kevin Riley not voting. Okay, thank you. We'll call that closed at 8:03 PM. Okay, so next item on our agenda is a pending matter, Robert Graham on AD Oak Street. That's been continued again, we're now continued until June 7th. Mr. Graham is still trying to decide what he wants to do on, on that parcel of land. I think we spoke briefly last meeting. That he has reached, I believe, an agreement with the abbot to indicate that a large triangular piece of land, narrow but long, triangular piece of land, actually does belong to the abbot and not to Graham, because that impacted where the roadway layout was and, and how they would be able to do that there. They're still trying to decide now what they want to do, so they will be coming back at some point. Currently, that point won't be before June 7th. That's the next scheduled date we have for that, so we'll keep everyone updated as soon as we hear from Graham as to, as to what's going on. In the other matters column, the annual town meeting, which was originally scheduled for next Monday, has been rescheduled until Monday, June 14th. Okay, so that's a, I believe that's five, five weeks from, from the original, the original scheduled date. So that is a, that is an off day for the planning board, so any members of the planning board that want to be at town meeting are certainly welcome to attend. There are a couple of zoning issues on there, there's a two zoning issues directly related to the planning board and corrections in the existing zoning bylaw. There's a zoning article for potential marijuana manufacturing, interior manufacturing. There's also a town bylaw related to marijuana manufacturing, which is required under state law to also be adopted if we were to, to have manu- inside marijuana manufacturing. I've been selected to, to speak on, on the town bylaw as well as the zoning bylaws. For everyone's benefit, especially the new members, we already have had our public hearings, we already voted our recommendations for the three zoning bylaws that are coming up. We will be, we will be presenting those recommendations, I will be presenting, well, provided everything is okay, I will be providing those recommendations at town meeting. And as I said, everyone is free to attend the town meeting to, to participate in the process, and you can see how zoning bylaws work in terms of trying to get them amended, if you haven't been to town meeting before. Anyone have any questions on any of that? Okay. I'm going to stop for just one second here, and I said briefly when we started by, I want to officially recognize new members Rob Ken and Sherri Bates to the board. I know from, from their background, and I'm sure both of you will contribute pretty quickly to the board, and I do appreciate your willingness to run for the planning board. Given that, I think we'll move to Mr. Allen, who's, who's our next item. Mr. Allen has presented the town with a Form A plan, Emery Lane. Owner, Donna Jean Allen, applicant Kenneth Allen and Donna Jean Allen. So this is a fairly straightforward, simple Form A lot. It's off the cul-de-sack at the end of Emery Lane. It creates, it basically subdivides the remaining land at the end of Emery Lane into what is labeled on the plan as Lot C1, and then a remaining parcel of Lot C2. C2 has existing frontage of over 40 feet on Emery Lane, which means technically speaking that, that it can be further subdivided. It does have the minimum frontage required to be able to further subdivide, that's the 40 feet on the cul-de-sack. So effectively, under the Massachusetts general laws, this plan qualifies as what's referred to as a Form A plan. That says that technically we're not approving this under subdivision control. We're simply voting to acknowledge an endorsement that says it doesn't require approval under subdivision control, since the street frontage that's required for Apostle C2 and the street frontage that's required to create Lot C1 is present on that existing cul-de-sack. And one last quick piece of clarification, the zoning bylaw and accepted case law uses the term lot to define a building area that meets the requirements of the zoning bylaw, so that whoever owns a lot can theoretically go to the building inspector and get a building permit to build on it. A piece of land that uses the term parcel says that that piece of land has potential future use but needs further action before the planning board and/or some other boards in town, before it can legally be built on. In this case, Apostle C2, before it could be legally built on, would have to have a filing with the planning board for a subdivision under subdivision control. Now that could potentially be a one-lot, two-lot, multiple-lot subdivision, depending on how it ended up, where the wetlands are, and what conservation allows in the future. But for now, all that, Mr. Allen is asking, and, and Donna Jean Allen is asking that we vote that we can endorse this plan as approval under subdivision control or not required, so... Given that, I'll entertain a motion to endorse the plan as approval under subdivision control not required. So move. Okay, so that's a motion, O'Larry, do we have a second to that motion? We have a second, Lawler. All those in favor of the motion, say aye. All those opposed?
No vote.
We'll show that as six in favor, none opposed, with acknowledging that Associate Member Kevin Riley did not record a vote for this. Okay. Fieldcrest is next on the agenda, and I understand there's some residents present who would like to...
Social distancing, I'm going to leave that up to you.
What's that?
Social distancing, I'm going to leave that up to you.
We've talked multiple times about this, so... So hopefully, on most Form A plans, we're going to have multiple discussions with the applicant before we actually have that come to the meeting. So typically, most Form As, we don't need a real discussion on, because we've iterated multiple times what we need to do. Now typically, that does not happen on subdivision plans, because the complication in subdivision plans is, is so many, so many levels higher than this, that we will have multiple discussions on subdivision plans with a, with a full body of the board present. And hopefully, in the future, we'll be sending these Form A plans out to everyone early on, as we get more organized.
We have more than 22 people in here.
Okay, I'll, I'll try and make this quick and simple, if we can do that. I understand while you're all here, excuse me?
We still have a few more people coming in? There are two people downstairs, yeah.
All right, so I'll do it, I'll do your best, my best, to tell you where we are and give you an update on things that have happened as early as this morning. We, as a town, have just hired a consulting engineering firm. One of the things we have discussed with them is, is a way to take the approved, approved plans that, that, and there's actually 20-some odd of these subdivisions, of which Fieldcrest is one, which haven't been accepted by the town yet because of the developers' failure to maintain a bond and developers' failure to provide us with a as-built plan, which is required under the law. That engineer was, is a, is a large engineering firm, actually based out of Quincy. The steps we're intending to take with them is to have them take the recorded version of the approved Fieldcrest plan, do an actual site review, and confirm that all of the boundary markers are correct, all of the easements are correct on the plan, and correct them if they're not, so that we have a plan that can be turned over to town council for acceptance, which requires that town council then draft the deed takings, which are required under Massachusetts general law. Technically, those fall under the selectman's purview, but we can't get to that step until we have a plan that, that's an as-built, accepted by the planning board that we then forward to the, to the board of selectmen. So, so as of right now, we're planning and we're working with the, the DPW as well to, to get these roads accepted. The expectation is that the, the the roads that get assigned to our engineer for acceptance are going to be based on length of roadway, of which Fieldcrest, I believe, is the second-longest subdivision road that hasn't been accepted. So that'll probably be in the first group of roads that go to the engineer. But we're going to give them between one and three plans to start with, to make sure that they can provide us with a plan that's acceptable to town council, so the roadway can be accepted. We're still not 100% sure how the fees are going to be handled for that. We have some discussions internally within all of the boards and the board of selectmen to decide how we do that. We do have some bond money for some of the roads in town. We do not for Fieldcrest and for Sagem Rock Estates, those, those two subdivisions. We had an insurance bond. And the insurance company filed bankruptcy in 1988 in the real estate crash, before the subdivision was completed, in terms of what we needed to be able to accept that, that roadway. We've been told several times by town council that, that they can't draw deeds until such time as they have an as-built plan. So we are addressing that issue. I, I can't do anything about the timelines, they're miserable, I understand that. We can't do anything about that?
Was that bond released?
I'm Jim Scorch, by the way, I've met you many times, Roy, over the years.
We never released the bond.
Well, you never released the bond?
The insurance company held the bond. That insurance company went bankrupt. Eighty-seven subdivisions in the state of Massachusetts had no bonds the day they went bankrupt.
Okay, so I'm only concerned with...
We had five of those, one of which was Fieldcrest Estates. We can't do anything about that.
So who's this, who's this engineer?
All right, we, we, we're not going to do that, because this is going to take too long to do that. I'm going to explain how this works, all right? I'm going to explain how this works. Town council has told us multiple times, and had been advised, that we cannot spend money to do that on the roadway until such time as they have documents they need to accept the road. We haven't been able to get there at this point, for several different reasons. One of which, our prior town council had some of the information we needed to get the roads accepted seven or eight years ago, and, and he ceased doing business with us without any warning. Current town, current town council, all that I'm going to tell you is the next step is documents are going to be drawn by our current engineer. When those documents are ready, and town council says they are ready, town council will then draw the deeds necessary to do the roadway taking. I can tell you right now, the earliest that will be, the earliest that will be, will be annual town meeting in 2022.
So how do you feel? We have a fellow in wheelchair at the corner of our street. Two guys in wheelchairs that can't even go around the block. And we're worried about meeting ADA requirements here. We, we certainly a wheelchair acceptable here, but my street is not. And we're going to wait another year till somebody gets hurt out there? And then the legal issues rise for this board in this town? This is unacceptable, this is...
I don't, I'm not going to disagree with that, but we can't legally do anything about that.
What about the original plans? Why do you have to wait for new plans to be drawn?
We don't have an as-built plan.
Now, Charlie, Charlie Woodward did the, as everybody here knows Charlie, he's my neighbor. We had our battles. I spoke with him the other day, he said this town had everything they needed. If they need anything, to let him know, and he'll give him another copy. Now, I don't know if Charlie, he didn't come tonight, unfortunately. I would have hoped he would.
So let me, let me discuss that further, okay? We're not going to have a big discussion here.
No, 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 I'm not looking for big discussion.
Our engineer is going to look at what he can come up with. His first step is to contact the names on those plans, who did them.
Okay, so Charlie will be on there, the company and the...
Let me explain, okay? We're not, let's not have a discussion, okay? I'm speaking. Let's not have a discussion.
Yeah, okay, a series of...
Step one, step one is our new engineer will contact the engineering firm that developed those plans. If that engineering firm has those, still has the information they need to be able to finish those, we'll ask our engineer to work with that engineering firm to finish them themselves, so we don't have to have a new engineering firm do that. That's step one, and we don't know where that is yet. Charlie was the, the engineer, Charlie's firm was the engineering firm on at least six of those subdivisions. I know for a fact that on five of those subdivisions, including Fieldcrest, he was never paid for the as-built plans. That's one of the reasons why we never got them. And we can't demand he provide them to us, we don't have a right to do that. Now, if we can sort out a way between our engineering firm and the town and potentially Charlie's firm, provided he's willing to participate, I mean, he has no legal requirement to, but if he is willing to participate, we may be able to get that done faster.
Well, I may be able to help with him, because he told me he would, so if, if I can help, I'll help.
Can I just ask one quick question? Does it, does it have to be accepted to repair it? Can you repair the road?
So let's discuss that a little. Under state law, it's private property. They're allowed to repair things that are considered public safety issues.
But they repaired the sewer grates, and they, they plow it, right? So they plow it, so they're plowing private property?
Well, let's not, let's not, let's not get too far with that, because that could be a problem. Somebody files a complaint, we're not plowing private property. Somebody files a complaint in court. Because that happened in Middleborough, when a, when a subdivision came into Middleborough, somebody filed a court complaint, and 18 subdivisions stopped getting their plowing done, because the court issued an order. We don't want to do that. So let's leave that alone for now.
Do you feel as though the town has any legal obligation here to assist us, or moral?
I'll, I'll say we have a moral obligation. The legal obligation says we can't do anything until we have a plan.
So now you've contracted with an engineering, engineering firm?
We just hired an engineering firm last week, and we had a kickoff meeting with them this morning.
And since they're...
No, no more than six hours ago.
They're, they're paid, so...
They will be paid.
What can we expect for a timeline, and what's the next step we should look for? In what amount of timeline? We're looking for forward motion, that's all we're asking for.
All that I can tell you...
We've waited 30 years for forward motion, and it hasn't developed. So now we just want a plan.
All right, let's stop, all right? I'll answer your question. We're not having a discussion tonight. We are not having a discussion tonight.
I thought it was an open forum, a public forum?
This isn't a, this, this is not a public hearing. I'm telling you that we've come up with a way to move forward. Town council has bought in on that very recently. We've hired an engineer, as of last week, that we had a kickoff meeting today. The amount of work they have to do means that it won't be possible to get this done at, at, at best until next annual town meeting.
I understand that, I'm just looking for what is, what are the timelines moving forward? My questions are very simple.
I've told you that already. We're going to send the first three plans, of which Fieldcrest and Sagem Rock Estates are two of those three, to our engineer, as soon as we sign the, the financial contract with our engineer, which should be within the next couple of weeks. We don't have control of that.
Okay, and I respect that. So we just wait? What is our next move as a community? Because a letter was sent from the planning board back in 2019 saying, "Please be informed, the planning board has taken this matter under review, and will contact you when any decisions have been made." Two years, no decisions have been made. I'm looking for a timeline to be established
You've got it.
So we can resolve this.
You've got it.
I really don't. What am I, who is going to get in touch with me?
That's the best timeline we can give you at this point.
So it's open-ended? We hope an engineer might come in, and we hope we'll have a road in 2022.
All right, let's, let's stop, let's stop. I gave you a timeline. These were... These will be going to our engineer as soon as we sign a contract, which will be in a week or two. The engineer will do the work necessary to satisfy what town council needs. Exactly what that is is still a bit open-ended, especially if he has to do the work and not the engineer whose stamp is on that plan. Then, then town council will approve the work they do, to say that that is satisfactory to draw the deeds they need to do, to do a taking for, for town meeting. That will take at least till the fall, at least. The timeline is, we're shooting for next annual town meeting for that first group of roadways.
Understood.
That's your timeline.
Understood. So who will be in touch with me as things develop? Or we just sit in silence like we have for 30 years?
You're welcome to contact the planning board office.
Okay.
And ask for an update in the timeline, if you want to.
You'll assist me?
You're free to do that.
With all my questions?
Well, if I can.
As to where things stand currently.
Who's the town, who's the current town engineer?
All we're looking for is forward progress. That's all we're looking for.
Who's our current town engineer?
Well, part, part of the problem we have that John resigned in early 2019, right when we were trying to get this done.
Yeah, no, I know.
John had some personal issues that he couldn't work around, and he sold his firm.
Yeah.
We had no control of that.
Yeah, no, I understand that very well. I'm just wondering, who's the new, who's the new town engineer?
It's an, an engineering firm called Environmental Partners that are out of Quincy.
Yep.
They have, they have a wide array of staff in-house to do all of the kind of stuff we need. We had a, a detailed discussion this morning with them about what we need to get done, and how we think it needs to get done, based on previous discussions that we had with John Delano. The first step will be, once they get assigned to do the work, to then contact the engineers who did the work at that point in time, to see if those engineers are willing to help out with, with what needs to be done, since they know the sites. Charlie is one of those.
Yeah.
That, that is still doing work.
So hopefully he'll, he told me I have everything I'd send him to him, and I said...
I, I talked to Charlie. Charlie has an awful lot of things, a lot of which he's never been paid for.
Yeah, I know.
And, and there's no way we can demand that Charlie give us stuff that you didn't get paid for. That's his personal property.
I understand that. Just if you got, got to understand here, the frustration.
Understood, understood.
I've been there since the beginning, as you know. I, I mean, Phil Beach worked for me.
Right.
And we had a conversation multiple times on this road, when the road was put in wrong to begin with. The water main's at nine and a half feet. I mean, we had a, we had lift that thing another four feet from it. My driveway went down to the road. Now it goes up to the road. And that's, shame on me for not waiting, probably, because I would have waited and raised my elevation, because the water table's so high. But anyhow, I had a conversation with, with, with Phil many times, and it was my understanding the bond was released, but he just didn't remember how. And that could be legitimate.
The bond, the bond was never released.
He did go bankrupt.
Yeah.
That, that's, there's not much anybody can do about that.
Ten, ten, 10.6 million dollars in bonds on about six subdivisions went...
Yeah.
In just one, one email notification from a bankruptcy court in New York, the United American Insurance Company is gone.
Yeah, yeah. So it's just frustrating, all these years. I, I mean, I've spoke with planning board members, Phil, I mean, on a daily basis. It worked on a daily basis. And, you know, I always, always under depression, impression that the road was a town road. And then to find out with John Haynes one day, when the water main went in front of my driveway, I mean, it looks like an open fire base in front of my house. I think everybody should have that look. You know, and, and we were talking, and I said to John, well, you know, the water main's down nine feet or so. Nah, I said, well, yeah. And we were in a, boy, the conversation, he said, this is not an accepted road. I said, really? And this was maybe eight years ago, the water main went in front, around that timeframe. I, I didn't know. I, I, Phil didn't lead, I, I didn't, I didn't understand Phil evidently, but that's, that's the past. Can't change the past. But I didn't know. That's when I sent the letter, my first letter stating, stating that. And then you responded a couple of weeks, which I thank you. And that was two years ago. That's why I get a little nervous. I know this engineering firm. I know people who do business with them. As you probably surmise, I already knew, but that, that don't, they're PEs, they know what they're doing. They're quite competent.
So we, we thought we were very close to this point, two years ago, when we were, there was some discussion back and forth back in 2019. This time we are there, this time we have a firm that we know can handle that. They're not going to go anywhere, I mean, they're a very large firm, they're not going to go anywhere in the short term.
I, I, I do have a concern about some of the people on the street that are wheelchair bound.
So I'll, I'll just, I'll just make one quick comment to that, and leave it at that. If you think there's a public safety issue in the, in the roadway that would become part of the public way, you need to communicate directly to the DPW.
Oh, yeah, I'll talk with John.
And, and don't, let, let's leave it out of this discussion.
Fine.
I don't, I don't want to get into a problem where this becomes an issue that, that somebody realizes what's going on and, and file something in court. We don't want to get there.
Yeah, no, no.
Let's leave this alone.
Yeah.
We're going to do our best to take care of this. If you've got a safety issue, talk to John.
I will.
John, it's John's call, and it, and his highway guy's call, who actually, actually is, is here on the board now, as of this year. Mr. Ken is, is one of John's top guys on the highway side, so he's hearing all of what, what you're telling us.
Well, he'll know if he drove around the street or some show he did.
I sent an email in 2015 to him about the...
So he's, he's, John is authorized under state law for, for emergency repairs and so forth. Once the decision is made on the DPW side, that, that crosses the line in terms of public safety issue.
Yeah, I'm just thinking the end of his driveway, make it nicely. Get out, go around the circle, you know, without...
I haven't.
Get stuck in a pothole, and everybody have to help me get out.
Make it around the circle.
No response.
Yeah.
All right, I have a question. Once this goes before next year's annual town meeting, that is a vote just to accept the road, right?
Yes.
What happens after that? How long and how much is it going to take for the road to actually be repaved?
That I can't answer, and it's, that's not a planning board jurisdiction issue. That belongs to the highway department, to the DPW, the highway department, division of DPW. I don't want to put Rob on the spot and ask anything about that, because this isn't the right forum for that, but my suggestion would be, again, you want to ask that directly to the DPW, as to when they think whatever needs to be done can be done. I, I did take a look last week at the three subdivisions that we're having, at least potentially planning on having our engineer look at. Fieldcrest was one of those three. Certainly, it, it needs a bunch of work.
Roy, with the same developer? I, I know they were doing Satcham Rock at the same time as Fieldcrest.
Yes.
Same developer, too.
Same developer. It was also doing rolling hills at roughly the same time.
Yeah, and there's issues there, I know.
Same, we have the same problem as well, the insurance bond, another insurance bond, which we had been advised by legal people in the state, that insurance companies have always been good for the bond, so we have to accept it. We were leery about that, but I don't think anybody could have predicted how bad eighty-seven got, given the building boom that was going on in eighty-five and eighty-six. But it happened, and the insurance company managed to pay off their first five or six bonds that got called, and the other eighty-some odd that they held throughout Massachusetts all went belly up to zero when they filed a liquidation bankruptcy.
So is it fair to say we won't be here next year, having this discussion, that forward motion will be taken, and we'll be well on our way?
I, I would certainly expect that's going to be the case.
Okay.
And as I said, you're free to contact the office. The office knows how to get ahold of me, within reason. If someone needs to talk to me, the office can tell you how to reach me. I'd be more than happy to talk to you. I'd be more than happy to go down there and, and speak with you if, if, if that would help.
Well, I know you had mentioned that they're looking at it, and that trying to decide which roads go first. Us happens to be one of the longer ones. It would make sense to me that you'd do the worst, and I, I bend down...
Well, that's also one of the worst, I think.
Yeah, exactly. So I would think that would be a priority, not the length of the road. So I would hope that Fieldcrest would be...
If everything else being equal, the, one of the, one of the reasons we're trying to do this is, in the state of Massachusetts, we have what's called Chapter 90 funds that the state gives to the town. Those Chapter 90 funds are dictated, the amount we get is, is a, it's a complicated algorithm, but basically, it's determined by how many feet of roadway are public. We have twenty point something, or twenty-one point something roadway, miles of roadway that haven't been accepted for one reason or another. Again, of which rolling hills, Satcham Rock Estates, Fieldcrest, there's others. None of the others are as big as those three, but there's others. So, so certainly, number one, I mean, we'd have to, again, we'd have to defer to the DPW, but I would assume number one, in terms of repair work, will be the ones that are in the worst shape, which we'll look at first. Fieldcrest has always been one of the first ones, and Satcham Rock has always been one of the top ones. We were trying to get this started off in late 2018 into 2019. They were two of the first three. There's a couple others that we have, a small amount of bond money, which may be enough to cover the plans we need to do, which didn't have insurance bonds. So I, I guess we can be thankful that insurance companies wouldn't insure small subdivisions, because it wasn't worth their while. We actually have some bond money from some of the more recent than eighty-seven, but some bond money for some of the subdivisions. But this is the first time we've actually had an engineering firm with a full capability to be able to do what we need to do.
Is the developer still around? Does anybody know?
Not that I know of, but I, I don't have any way of knowing that, really. Okay?
Thank you, sir.
I know that's not what you really want to hear, but hopefully the fact that we, we're telling you that we are moving forward, and, and hopefully, we're going to get this going pretty quickly, is at least partly the right answer.
You have a plan, that's all we're asking for.
Right, we just want answers. You know, if we email the DPW, we want to respond, not ignore and ignore.
We're jointly working together, the DPW. John, John Haynes was in that meeting this morning with the engineer, when we discussed the specifics of how we do this. He's on board how we want to do it, so he's, he's party to the discussion.
Okay.
Okay? All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. If you're ordering... Beginning of the year, end of the year? We got to wait to November 2022?
Thank you.
May or June is the 22 annual meeting where it gets...
Maybe I shouldn't have told him that.
Excepted, okay. Thank you.
This year's, this year's is due...
I'm here during the week, and if they have questions, I can get in touch with the environmental partners, and I just need a point person. I don't want to talk to 30 different people 30 different times.
No, so, so one of the other things we're working on, in, in the discussion we had this morning, is a, is a detailed contact list of the various departments, and who in which departments will be the contact people. We are going to have one primary contact at environmental partners, and he will have access to all of his, you know, his various different disciplines and so on and so forth, depending on who needs, you know, what to, to discuss that with, but certainly, certainly John and you would be, would be two of the names on the DPW list, without, without question.
Yeah, I've worked with a few.
Rob's talking about having a representative from the neighborhood that he can talk to.
Yeah.
You know, so he's not talking to... If they call Dottie for, for an update, then she's going to call you. I'd be more than willing to have you either have them call me, or you call me, and I'll get in touch with environmental partners. Since I'm here during the day, you know, 40 hours, I have no problem doing that.
Okay.
What I tend to do is get the information from them, and I would contact you like Roy. What I'll do is I'll get their information, give it to Roy, so when Roy's available, he can follow.
Sure.
I mean, because he doesn't work for the town.
Yeah.
But, but you do. But I, I can do that. I can get their information.
We'll work out that, as, as we get, as we get more into this, especially when we start hopefully getting into a flow of, of getting these done in some reasonable sequence, relatively, relatively short time. We'll come up with a clear line of communication, and who needs to communicate on, on which issues and things like that, so. I honestly thought from this morning in the discussion I had, and I had a telephone discussion with, with, with the engineer, who's going to be our contact.
Scott?
Yes. Scott Turner.
Scott Turner, yeah.
And they may have to work out a little bit of legalese as to exactly how they do that. If they have to take a plan with someone else's stamp on it, and that engineer is, is not available to participate in this process, town council and their council probably have to work out some kind of disclaimer to put on the plan, and then they'll note what they're adding to it, so it's clear that they start, they're starting at a, at some point where a bunch of work's already been done by someone else.
Yeah.
But I, I think from discussions with, with Scott, and with, with our town council, some discussions that actually happened back late 2018, 2019, when we were working through that list of unaccepted streets, to try and get this moving. Everybody seems to be fairly comfortable with how we can do this. We only need to, technically, we only need to do enough of it, so that the town council can do the taking work, the deeds that need to be written for the taking.
Right.
But, but my, my, and John's concern is, we need to make sure that those things that the DPW needs to maintain over time are correctly identified on that plan. If, if an easement in a, in a detention area, detention basin, or swale that goes through a detention basin, isn't physically where it's shown on the plan, that we need that to get, we need to get that corrected.
Right.
So that when we do the taking, we're taking the right easements in addition to the street. Because we don't want to have an easement where there's somebody's lawn, and, and the detent, you know, the swale down to the detention basin is on a different lawn.
Right.
Because that's going to create difficulty, and I'm going for maintenance purposes. All right, so, all right, along those, along, do we have an update on the 60 Franklin Street drive-through? Has Patrick given us any feedback on what he's seen there?
No.
Because they're actually using it now, right?
I'm assuming, so I'm assuming everything is what it's supposed to be.
So I, I was disappointed by the fact that I did confirm when I went down there and looked, the, the office area where the electrical company is, is clearly vacant.
Yes, they left.
So as it, as it turns out, they were unhappy enough about the way the landlord was modifying the building and putting the drive-through right past their doorway, that they've left. We're in the process, is, is part of the engineering review piece, we're in the process of reviewing our fees. We're going to be getting more information from environmental partners, but our fees are going to change. Exactly how we do that is, is not totally certain yet. It, it may be based on a combination of, for a subdivision, for example, is number of It may be based on a combination of, for a subdivision, for example, is number of lots and number of house lots or whatever. We still have to think that through. We are going to make it clear to all applicants going forward that their tab is the engineering tab. State law requires that on private property being developed on applications before the planning board, subdivisions and special permits, that all of those engineering fees have to be paid by the applicant. The town is not allowed to pay any money for, effectively for the improvement of private property. In many ways similar to roadway issues. But I'll keep you updated on that, I am working with a, with a combination of various towns' fees to try and get an idea of how they calculate their fees and what those fees are. We're also going to be working with environmental partners to make sure that the, the structure is compatible with the fees that they're going to be charging us for their engineering reviews. We are going to be sending them a couple of sets of plans, probably tomorrow. We are going to have some discussions with them on Wednesday in our ad hoc group. So I'm thinking they're pretty, pretty quickly going to hit the ground running and we're going to get moving forward here, so. So the, I'm going to move down to the... Well, Elmwood Court, which is off of West Street, the developers have received our documents indicating what he needs to do next to follow through with the roadway acceptance procedures. We still actually have a bond for that subdivision, so until we receive the necessary documents, that bond is not going anywhere. I know they're in the process of trying to get that done and followed. The Victory Lane streetlight issue, I've had a discussion with our interim town administrator. I think he fully understands where we need to go with that. We need several things done, one of which requires the board to select them into an agreement with National Grid to lease all streetlight in the future. My understanding is National Grid also wants a town to select one of, I believe they still offer three different types of structures for streetlights. That the town pick one of those will be the ones that go in and that the town then going forward leases, once the roadway is accepted. They also require the developer, when the developer petitions National Grid to put those poles in with the lights on them, they require a notarized document that says the developer agrees to pay for the leasing of the pole and the streetlight until such time as the town accepts it as a public way. So that should cover all of the bases in terms of that. I think from my understanding, the discussion with the town administrator, which was, I think it was last Thursday, that's going to move forward. He knows to contact me if there's any issues remaining because I think he has copies of all of the documents he needs, but he knows how to get me, we've had multiple discussions on that in the last week or two. I think that covers everything on the agenda.
I think it does.
Is there anything else, anyone here wants to discuss?
Can we request from the building inspector, building commissioner, that we get a letter regarding sixty Franklin Street certifying that the work that has been, or the work, or the conditions that were set by the planning board have been satisfied in the final construction?
I'll certainly talk to him directly about how he wants to handle that in the, in the future. That's going to be a... I think we need to discuss this further, but I think in the future, now that we have a, an engineering firm on board, that we're going to want to see an Asbilly plan submitted by the applicant indicating that everything that's supposed to be there is physically in the place that it's supposed to be on that plan with an actual Asbilly delineation mark on the plan that says this is the Asbilly of the plan that was approved. I will speak to the, the billing inspector has indicated that from a public safety standpoint, it does appear that everything that we've asked for is in its places. The bollards are in the right place, the area that separates off the traffic lane so that once people get to the speaker there, there's, there's a clear barrier that funnels you down through the drive-through. I'm still not happy with the parking situation behind the building, although now that the electrician is gone or the electrical company is gone, at least temporarily, that's not a problem. With those three big bay doors in the back, if people are coming out or there's deliveries going on there and the business that's in the rear that has, I think it's two platform trucks for moving cars. If those are parked there and there's vehicles delivering at those, at those overhead doors, that there is a problem in clear traffic flow through there, but I think if we see that as a problem and the building inspector sees that as a problem, he has a right to tell the owner of the land, which is the same for the back building as the front building, it's the same landlord, has a right to tell him that he's got to tell those, the back building that they can't park their, their big ramp trucks back there. Because when those are parked ninety degrees to the building, they extend like twenty-five feet out into that drive area. And as I said, with, without anything backed up against those garage doors, that's not a problem right now, but...
From, from the way that things were presented here, I don't know that there's necessarily a great deal of communication slash, whatever you want to say, between landlord and tenants.
Clearly there isn't, that's, there's no question about that.
So, you know, I just...
I will talk to the building inspector, now that the drive-through is open and operating, I will talk to him and make sure that everything that got physically put in place met all of the requirements, so. And I'll ask him if he's willing to write us a letter describing what he sees down there as it currently stands.
And if he sees that there are problems that...
Technically, everything issued on a, on a special permit document becomes issues to resolve as part of zoning enforcement, so. But I will have a discussion with him about that tomorrow, I want to see him tomorrow. All right, anybody else have anything? All right, again, welcome to our new members, thank you all for being here.
Motion adjourned eight forty-six.
We've got a motion to adjourn, that's a motion Riley, Second O'Leary at eight forty-six PM. All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, we'll show that as unanimous votes, seven in favor and none opposed, thank you all.
Thank you.